Board meeting, we do have a quorum, we got seven of seven. And shall we stand for invocation and pledge a list to the flag at this time?
Let us pray. Father God, we just thank you for such a beautiful day that you provided for us. And as we go into this meeting, Father, we just ask that everything we say and do tonight will be pleasing to your ears. Father, just I ask for a hedge of protection around each and everyone here. And we ask it in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a motion to approve our work agenda for tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I would offer a motion to approve the amended agenda as distributed at our desk, sir.
What can I do? A motion by supervisor Miles, second by supervisor Bryant, that we would approve our work agenda with amended items. Are you ready to vote? Seven yes. All right, the minutes, what's your pledge on the minutes?
I'll move. I'll say.
Motion by supervisor Allen, second by supervisor Davis, that we approve our minutes. Any questions, all in favor? Seven yes. The next one agenda is our claims.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the claims be approved as presented, sir.
Motion by supervisor Miles, second by supervisor Gillian, that the claims be approved as presented. Are there any questions, all in favor of the motion? Seven yes. Are there any announcements at this time? Here and now, let's move down to presentations. And the first one would be the recognition of the Buckingham County Scholastic Bowl 2023 state champions. Do we have them here tonight? Do we have our state champions present? Standing on, Jordan?
Stand on in the back.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Y'all come on down.
All right, so tonight, the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors is proud to recognize the 2023 state championship winners of the Scholastic Bowl team. Let's go ahead and give them a hand before we do our award, please. So first, we're going to give their certificate of appreciation and congratulations from excellent performance to Coach Ryan Peaty. Okay, let's see, next Luke Freeman. Not here, okay. This is for Courtney Agi. The next one is for Justice Steger, and I don't think she is here. Albert, I don't think we've got.
Did we have him?
Yeah, but I just haven't got to it yet. All right, the next person who we're recognizing is Kyra Johnson, and I don't think Ms. Johnson is here, so. The next person is Albert, and Albert, how do you say your last name?
Young.
Young, so congratulations, come on up. The next person is someone who lives in my district, Will Payne, congratulations. And last but not least, the leader of this illustrious team, and that's Chance Woodson, so congratulations. Our future is bright with these young people here, and let's give them one more round of applause, please.
Pledge of allegiance, and I did the recognition of Chance Woodson, Miss Virginia 2023. I look at Joe Chamberlain. Hey, look, Buckingham County Board of Supervisors, we have now recognized and expressed congratulations. We will take the equally endorsed 2023. Praise to stand, a prayer. The next is a revelation, brother. I just love it.
Whereas the Buckingham Dillon Garden Club was formed in 1932 as the Dillon Garden and Service Club, and the name was subsequently changed to the Buckingham Dillon Garden Club to better reflect its purpose and membership. And whereas, over the years, the club has fostered a love of gardening for pleasure, production of fresh food, and protection of the environment. And whereas, under its motto, quote, "For the beauty of the earth," quote, and through its programs, the club has contributed practical expertise and assistance to gardeners of all abilities and sizes of garden, from its work with 4-H members to retirement home residents. Whereas, the club in 1933 became and is a federal, and I'm sorry, is a federated member of the National Garden Club of America and of the Virginia Federation of Garden Clubs. And whereas, through these affiliations, the club has and continues to support youth-centered programs to help youth realize the rewards and life lessons from gardens and habitats for becoming good stewards of the earth, including environmental awareness, education, plant-to-food connections, outdoor classroom projects, horticulture education, and the social aspects of gardening. And whereas, these programs also include the Virginia Wildflower Program, started with the Virginia Department of Transportation in 1976, for the beautification of Virginia's roadsides by the planting of wildflowers and trees and the healing garden at Lewis Ginter Botanical Garden in Richmond, Virginia, which features plants known for their medicinal properties and a setting designed to restore the spirit, and youth education opportunities offered through scholarships awarded annually to the college students studying horticulture-related fields. And whereas, the club designated and installed the landscaping around the Buckingham Arts Center building and installed the planting of daylilies from Monticello at the Buckingham Courthouse. And whereas, the club's annual plant sale provides county residents an opportunity easily and affordably to acquire Buckingham-grown plants, along with the knowledge of how to plant and care for them. And whereas, the club established and maintains the Blue Star Memorial at the Lee Way Side. And whereas, the club has been honored regionally and statewide for its programs benefiting the community and citizens of Buckingham County, including its annual holiday decoration of the arts center and programs for the residents of our local nursing home. And whereas, on June 10th, 2023, the members of the Buckingham Dillon Garden Club are celebrating their 90th year of existence. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors recognizes and commends the Buckingham Dillon Garden Club for its many accomplishments, and be it further resolved that the residents of Buckingham County are encouraged to take note of the garden club's accomplishments and contributions to the community.
Thank you, young lady. Sure, you can say a few words, young lady, go ahead.
But not a few thousand.
No, not a few thousand, but you can say a few.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On behalf of the garden club, we are very proud to be standing here tonight in company with these outstanding young people who came before us. And we also are very proud to welcome you to our 90th anniversary party, and I hope we'll see a lot of you there, you gentlemen as well. It's at the community center on June 10th. And I hope you'll come over and share a piece of cake with us, as well as pick up some incidental gardening knowledge. Thank you.
Let's give the young ladies a big hand. Ask the family of Ms. Peaks, will you come, or Ms. Lena Peaks' family?
That true.
Will you come, Father, please? I want to be with the Lord, but she was a great cook, amen. She worked in the school system for many years.
A resolution in memoriam for Lena Lucille Peaks. Resolution in memoriam for Lena Lucille Peaks. Whereas Lena Lucille Peaks departed this life on March 14th, 2023, at Centrus Southside Community Hospital in Farmville, Virginia. And whereas Lena Lucille Peaks was born on August 13th, 1933, here in Buckingham County, Virginia. And whereas Lena Lucille Peaks was the daughter of the late Ivanhoe and Mary Bradley Patterson. Whereas, and whereas Lena Lucille Peaks is preceded in death by her husband Randolph Peaks Senior, three sons Raymond Peaks, Randolph Peaks Junior, and Vernon Peaks, and one granddaughter, Ivette Payzinger, and one step-grandson, Latrell Maxey. Whereas Lena Lucille Peaks is survived by her three daughters, Eva Mae Payzinger of Lynchburg, Rose Marie Ziegler, and Regina McCoy of Dillon, two sons Alvin B. Peaks and Maria of Irvington, New Jersey, and Gaston R. and Terry Peaks of Dillon, one sister Francine Giles of Dillon, 15 grandchildren, 33 great-grandchildren, and 12 great-great-grandchildren, three step-grandchildren, and lots of nieces, nephews, and cousins, along with other relatives and friends. Whereas Ms. Peaks grew up in Buckingham County, where she received her education at the county public schools. Whereas Ms. Peaks was a member of Second Liberty Baptist Church, where she was a deaconess president of the Kitchen Committee, president of the Missionary Board, a Sunday School teacher, an usher, a choir member, and the church custodian. Whereas Ms. Peaks was an employee of Buckingham County Public Schools and the Buckingham Cafeteria Elementary School, where she retired June 2021. Whereas Lena Lucille Peaks was known for always meeting people with a smile on her face and made sure everything she did was done decent and in order, which are traits that are admired by many. Whereas Lena Lucille Peaks was greatly loved by all who knew her and will greatly be missed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors does in memoriam on the 8th day of May, 2023, pay tribute and express its highest esteem for Lena Lucille Peaks and extend our deepest sympathy to her family and loved ones.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome. Thank you. Reverend Worley family here, room of family here. Reverend Worley?
Yeah.
A resolution in memoriam for Reverend Otis Haynesworth Worley. Whereas Reverend Otis Haynesworth Worley departed this life on April 3rd, 2023. Whereas Reverend Worley was born on July 17th, 1934. Whereas Reverend Worley was the son of the late James C. and Ida Hicks Worley. Whereas Reverend Worley is survived by his loving, dear wife of 58 years, Nioka Conister Hayesworth, and children Valerie Royal and David, Jennifer Hellerstat and Tim, and Jonathan Worley and Sarah, grandchildren Hope Ferguson and Corbin, Ashley Hellerstout, pardon me for mispronouncing that, I apologize, Noah Westbrook, Drew Royer, Caleb Harris, a great-grandson Theo, and his beloved dog Sassy. Whereas Otis Worley grew up in Buckingham County and graduated from Buckingham Central High School, then went on to study at Duke University. Whereas Reverend Worley attended Rocky Mount United Methodist Church, where he accepted the calling into ministry. He pastored three churches in the Farmville District. He retired after 26 years in 1997 and moved back to Buckingham County. Whereas Reverend Worley was known for his dedication to God and the United Methodist Church, but mainly known for his deep love for his family. Whereas Reverend Worley was greatly loved and respected by all who knew him, and he will be greatly missed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors does in memoriam on this 8th day of May, 2023, pay tribute and express its highest esteem to the Reverend Otis Haynesworth Worley and extends its deepest sympathy to his family and loved ones.
I hope some point down the road, we can get these people the resolutions while they're still alive. I remember this preacher was preaching this guy's film, and a lady had bought a bunch of flowers, bought a bunch of beans, a pile of beans, and set them down beside the casket. Church was full up with flowers. He said, "Woman, why did you bring your beans in the church?" She said, "Reverend, he can smell the flowers, he can eat the beans." Pastor Pete Sangerton family?
The resolution for Peter Francisco Singer. And this is Sharon Singer, his wife, and his sister Carol are going to be accepting this in his honor. Whereas Peter Francisco Singer departed this life on April 13th, 2023, at the age of 68. Whereas Peter Francisco Singer was born July 21st, 1954. Whereas Peter Francisco Singer was the son of Daniel Martin Singer Junior and Alice Lincolns Singer. Whereas Peter Francisco Singer is survived by his wife Sharon, children Kelly, Joe, and Brian, and grandchildren Riley and Matthew, siblings Dan Singer, Carol Singer, Paul Singer, and Brenda, and Christine, Brian, and Philip, as well as his nieces and nephews. Whereas Peter Francisco Singer graduated Virginia Tech with a Bachelor of Science degree in animal sciences. He taught agriculture sciences for over 30 years and retired from Buckingham County Public Schools in 2014. Whereas Peter Francisco Singer was the advisor for the Future Farmers of America Club and devoted many hours of teaching, hunter safety, education, gun safety, parliamentary procedure. Coach Tebow, for many years, loved his family, farm, hunting, woodworking, and helping others. Whereas Peter Francisco Singer influenced so many young lives as well, and was well-loved and respected by his students and peers. Now, therefore, to be resolved that the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors does in memorandum of this 8th day of May, 2023, pay tribute to and express its highest esteem to Peter Francisco Singer and extends its deepest sympathy to his family and loved ones. And he did a terrific job as a teacher and advisor in our public school system.
The next one agenda is Greg Hawkinson, Blue Line Solutions.
Good evening.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
My name's Greg Hawkinson, Blue Line Solutions.
I'm sorry, can you turn the mic back around?
Okay, is that good? Well, my name's Greg Hawkinson, with the company called Blue Line Solutions. We are a traffic safety company that focuses on the safety of our children in their school zones. Our company came in to Buckingham County and met with the sheriff. I think we've met all and know each other and talked about our program, how it's implemented. I just want to come back today to say, do you have any questions on how the program goes? Or if you want me to go through briefly on what the program entails and how it's properly implemented and the educational part that goes along with this type of new enforcement in the Commonwealth.
Do you want to, or am I have a question for Mr. Hawkinson?
No, sir, I don't.
I think it'd be a good idea to possibly catch the high spots on what your company does.
Okay.
Just kind of lay it out a little bit.
Yes, sir. In 2020, the General Assembly passed legislation which would allow a type of automated enforcement focused in two locations within the Commonwealth, and that's school zones where it's most important for our children and in work zones where our family members are working in these construction zones and high-traveled areas. This type of enforcement can be enacted under a locally adopted ordinance, or it can be through the Buckingham Traffic Ordinance that's already adopted the state code. We come in and we conducted a survey in your primary school, your elementary school, that where this program would be implemented in October of 2022. We came in for five days and did a study at the Buckingham Primary and Elementary School. During that five-day period, there was 25,639 vehicles came through that one school zone during school zone hours. There were 3,126 violations at 11 and above. So that is a staggering number that shows a need. And what really stood out to me, as a former law enforcement officer for 26 years, a former DARE officer, a former school resource officer, I know the importance of protecting our school zones and protecting our children. There was 298 violations in that week at 21 and above. So that's not a traffic infraction anymore, that's a Class 1 misdemeanor reckless driving by speed. So it is an issue that needs to be looked at. Photo enforcement is different than traditional enforcement under Motor Vehicle Code. This is a civil penalty only. There are no points assessed to your driver's license for a violation of this nature. It's not reported to the DMV, so therefore, your insurance will not go up. It's what I call a less punishable offense, but we're trying to correct bad driving behavior through these very important zones and make it safer for our children. We focus, our main focus for any type of new enforcement to be successful in any locality is proper education to the public. And we come at it as a collaborative approach through the school system and through our local law enforcement, which will be the sheriff. We go in it together as a team to properly educate the citizens of the county or the locality so they're very well aware on how it's going to be implemented and the success of it. And we continually track our program by data after post-implementation and share that information with the board, with the school system, with our parents, their parent portal to show that the program is continuously progressing and we're slowing violations down in these areas, so.
All right, that's good. We thank you for coming.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you have any other questions, I can be reached at any time.
You have anything, Sheriff?
How y'all doing, gentlemen?
Afternoon.
I think it's important to reiterate that enforcement itself doesn't begin until they've reached 10 miles over the posted speed limit. So, I mean, it's not going to be a one to two mile an hour over thing. And everybody knows you should slow down in a school zone, they ought to know it by now. And basically, it's a tax. It's a fool's tax. And I appreciate it if you consider it. Thank you.
giving people ten? It's a school zone. So you know, that's that's out of our control as a company. That's what the General Assembly put into statute and that's the guidelines that we have to follow. In the future, things may change with amendments to the code as it is, but as of now, it has to be eleven over before it's considered a violation. I just want to clarify for that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Cott, we'll have to action tonight though.
Yes, sir. We'll get with the sheriff's office and they want to go forward this. We'll get a public hearing to have it ordinance change.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
The ordinance had to be changed. I thought the ordinance was already in place for them to do that.
Our local ordinance.
A local, okay.
Next on our agenda is that public comments. How many guys signed up, Mr.?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. You speaking for a group, we'll give you five minutes. You're speaking individual, we give you three minutes. Okay, what who was the first one?
Bob Abbott, District Five.
District Five, Mr. Abbott.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
If I told you, I'd have to kill you. On April thirteenth, in the middle of the day, I met our new registrar of elections as he was posting a sign on the door stating that the electoral board meeting was canceled for the coming Monday. I introduced myself and I asked him his name and his response was leaning in and saying, if I told you, I'd have to kill you. My name's Bob Abbott, which is a professional way to respond to that question. I'm also a combat veteran. I served eight years in the Air Force as an NCO and a captain. I served five years for the Army. I deployed twice to Afghanistan where I had been shot at, grenadeed, rocketed, and finally blown up by a vehicle. Thus retiring me and thank you all for paying your taxes. I mean my retirement. Perhaps I'm not the best person who you don't know who is to lean in and say in your second sentence, if I told you, I'd have to kill you. I used to work special programs. I worked with NATO Special Forces in support. I'm not a badass, excuse my language. I'm an IT guy. I'm an intel nerd and I make assessments. That's what I do. I volunteered to go out of Afghanistan twice to defend the integrity of elections. I supported our military and I supported our law enforcement professionals and I supported our NATO partners and for that I was shot at, grenadeed, rocketed, and bombed. When I came back, I moved to Buckingham two years ago. Harry, I'm sorry, you have to deal with me in your district. And I volunteered to serve at the Gold Hill Precinct. Being a hundred percent physically disabled, I served the entire day and Woody will tell you I told terrible jokes the entire day to raise the morale. Whereas I like to say it, well, never mind. I'm not going to say that joke, Woody. She makes that joke and it's highly inappropriate. But we're here, quite a few of us, to talk about highly inappropriate comments from an official that y'all hired, a county employee who told me with regards to his name, if I told you, I'd have to kill you. Now, we talked for an hour and a half because I'm an intel weenie. I wanted to know more about this man. I understand he's an architect, a statistician, a psychologist, likely an astronaut, and possibly a congressman from New York.
Yes, sir.
But there's several of us, I have twenty seconds left, sir. There's several of us combat veterans here who I know and we do not need if he's considered for replacement a new employee that tells us, if I told you, I'd have to kill you, who makes disparaging remarks about underrepresented minorities to which too live in my family or make other comments. Please hire well.
Sir, let me clarify something. The board didn't have nothing to do with this hand.
I understand that.
We didn't hire him. That was a that was a hack of the Republican Party.
I felt that the board should be aware of the statements made on April thirteenth.
We thank you. But we didn't hire we didn't hire him.
I'm putting it all on your it's all you, Joe.
We'll take.
Thank you very much for your time. I'm sorry that this is the first time that y'all have to meet me and me expressing.
You're welcome to come back again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second one.
Kadja Dabney, District Five. Woody Haynes will be next.
Good evening, everyone.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
My name is Kadja Dabney and I have been a resident of Buckingham County since November the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two residing in District Five Rights Precinct. I wanted to attend this meeting to address an issue with applying for employment in Buckingham County. I decided to seek employment closer to my home and apply for the vacant position of General Registrar Director of Elections. I have a bachelor's degree from Liberty University and having all the required skills and abilities for this specific specific position. On April the ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, I Kadja Dabney applied for the vacant position, General Registrar Director of Elections. And as of this day and moment, I never received an email or a phone call regarding anything requiring about this position. Due to this matter, I am very concerned that individuals whom are qualified are not receiving an equal opportunity to be given a chance to interview for vacant positions in Buckingham County. And as I stand here today, I would like to advocate not only for myself but for many other qualified individuals whom have applied for employment in this county, community and county and did not receive an equal opportunity as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Woody Haynes, District Seven. Maggie Snotty will be next.
Good evening. I'm Woody Haynes. I reside at four four six zero South Constitution Route, Dillon, Virginia. I am the newly appointed member of the Buckingham County Electoral Board. As you probably already know, the processes undertaken by the Buckingham County Electoral Board and the Registrar's Office that involve elections are being closely reviewed in other localities as well as state level. How Buckingham manages the process can induce consequences nationally. I emphasize emphasize this because per discussion of various individuals, the media is watching our electoral process. Therefore, as a newly appointed Electoral Board member, I hope that the current elected Electoral Board will be able to work together in a nonpartisan manner along with a qualified registrar to ensure our elections are safe and secure. Per Code twenty-four point two dash one oh nine, to be consistent with the Electoral Boards, the duty is to appoint a general registrar is our priority. Must we must ensure that there's necessary personnel, even if it's temporary, are in place to carry on registration processes. Currently, we have an interim registrar whose appointment will end June thirtieth. June thirtieth is only six weeks away and hopefully the Electoral Board will be posting the notice to advertise for a permanent registrar position, posting it locally such as the Farmville Herald, the statewide general registrar's listserv, the county website so that we get a good population of applicants. It has been most difficult to carry out the functions of my position without prompt responses. There are some concerns from citizens in Buckingham County that the hiring process was flawed and hopefully can address these concerns in the emergency meeting that has been scheduled for tomorrow, Tuesday, May ninth, at the Buckingham County Community Center Multipurpose Room. It is my priority to ensure that the necessary permanent personnel are in place and the office is running efficiently at a hundred percent. Once a permanent registrar is appointed, the state officers of election referred to as the elect will be glad to assist us with training and logistical concerns. I want to be fully I want to be a fully functioning Electoral Board member, but I'm not being allowed because I have not been allowed to see any of the paperwork, any of the applications, any of the resumes, cover letters, background checks. Have I have not received that by the Electoral Board in the search of a registrar. I am sharing this with the citizens of the county to make them aware that the future posting of this permanent position will be an appointment for four years in the event that they did not subscribe to any of the forms of media. It is my desire that all qualified applicants have an opportunity to be considered for this position. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Maggie Snotty, District Five. And Chad Oba will be next.
Good evening. My name's Maggie Snotty. I live at one ninety-four Mountain View Road, Scottsville, and I'm in the Glenmore District. Six score and eight days ago, a small contingent of citizens brought forth onto this county a new Electoral Board conceived in partisanship and ineptitude and dedicated to the proposition that intimidation and harassment of our then registrar as well as some of our officers of election, along with many misstatements, misrepresentations, and conflagrations of the law were effective tools to break down the electoral system in the county. In less than five months, they have effectively brought the office of the registrar to a standstill. Prior to January of twenty twenty-three, no one hardly even attended an Electoral Board meeting. They never felt the need to because the Electoral Board was composed of men and women of high intelligence, dedication competence, and nonpartisanship. Since January, we have had as many as sixty and eighty people attending Electoral Board meetings. People are attending out of fear that our electoral system is falling apart. Since January of twenty twenty-three, four members of the Electoral Board have resigned. One Democrat who served fifteen years, one Republican who served two months, one Republican who served three and a half months, and one Republican who only served a week. The following items of concern were called out at the Electoral Board meeting of April twenty-eighth. There are concerns that the interim registrar may have been hired illegally, was a background check and a drug test conducted as is required for all candidates who are interviewed for any county position. All indications are that the Republican Board members are not cooperating with and are not willing to share information with the Democratic Board member. The fact that one Board member was has appointed herself as chair and hired the current interim registrar by herself. For four days in March, following the resignation of the registrar and her remaining staff on March twentieth, there was no one in the registrar's office. Then the office was open but no work was done for one month because no one had access to the Verus computer system. All that anyone could do was answer the phone. Access to Verus was only given sometime after April twenty-first. So no voter registrations were able to be processed nor were candidate packets and signatures able to be verified and I know many of you can attest to that. Now we are engaged in a great civil strife in our community testing whether this community or any community so conceived and so dedicated to free and fair elections and the constitutional right of every citizen to vote can long endure. The national news media continues to cover this story. They have said the eyes of the nation are on Buckingham County. We cannot continue on the path we are on. The electoral system in this county will not stand up under the weight of this ineptitude. I have spoken before about the importance of a good balance between experienced officers of election and newly appointed officers of election. Two hours of training does not qualify someone to be chief or assistant chief at the polls. This situation is not getting any better and it's important that we act now and not wait until November. I end with these prophetic words of the great Elijah Cummings and I paraphrase only slightly. This quote this quote motivates me every day to make sure I'm doing everything I can to preserve free and fair elections in this county and for all the people of this county. Here's the quote. When we're dancing with the angels, the question will be asked, in twenty twenty-three, what did we do to make sure we kept our democracy intact? Thank you.
Who is next Jennifer?
Chad Oba, District Six.
District Six.
And Joyce Gooden will be next.
Thank you.
Good evening, District Six, five seven one Woods Road, Buckingham, Virginia. Chad Oba. And I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of Buckingham tonight. So thank you. I'm going to start with the electoral process that I'm I'm hearing more and more about and I can't tell you how many times I've been contacted by friends and family outside of Buckingham to say what on earth is going on. So indeed, people are watching and I think it's going to have a big impact. We need to make sure we do the right thing. We must do everything to preserve our most democratic principles. And my second topic is guess what? The gold mine. So looking at reports worldwide, I'm pretty upset by the serious damage that I'm reading about metallic mining. And I'm really grateful that you've asked the Planning Commission to start the process to amend the zoning ordinance to ban metallic mining in any zoning district in Buckingham County. The commission seems to have gotten a bit distracted from your directive by to ban to look into banning gold mining because they've been listening to mining industry and they did so for over two hours and and not so much from other people that might have something to say about it and who would say that the existing zoning code is really inadequate as as we are now. I'm concerned that the Planning Commission has not really grasped the seriousness of just how damaging metallic mining is. This is because of their talk of using existing special use permits instead of a ban. A permit could allow it to happen. More of the same is really not good enough. Relying on a special use permit is not the answer. The word special use permit pretty much says it all. It means that under special circumstances, a permit could be approved. The county has the power, the permission from Virginia state law to ban metallic mining in all districts. Existing mining could be grandfathered in. Also, it could allow critical minerals mining. Currently, excuse me, mining is allowed by right in M two and no local permitting is required. They can bycast the county and go directly to the state. Mining is possible with a special use permit in A one and M one. This all really needs to be changed. The locality is the best is the first place industry goes to get permission required for new metallic mining unless it's an M two. Once that door is opened, the state gets the green light to move forward with the rest of the permitting process. There is no pending reform, it seems, in sight in Virginia regulations. Thus, we're really not protected and we need to stop this here and now. Do I have a couple extra minutes because of the five minutes or?
Did you I understand you said you were speaking for?
Yeah, Friends of Buckingham.
You got five minutes.
Okay, so I can continue. Okay. The state study says that the state's protections are inadequate in many very concerning ways. It actually says that even with the best of regulations, the risk cannot be completely eliminated. No current state or local requirements will be enough to protect us. The commissioners are talking about working with existing zoning code, the special use permit, but it's not clear how they would work with it to make it strong enough to protect us. We don't hear them talking about a ban. There seems to be a disconnect between the Planning Commission and what you have annual and what you have tasked them to do. So I'm wondering if you're actually following their process. That's about it. I'm just I'm hoping that you're. Once that door is open, the state gets the green light to move forward with the rest of the permitting process. There is no pending reform, it seems, in sight in Virginia regulations. Thus, we're really not protected, and we need to stop this here and now. Do I have a couple extra minutes because of the five minutes, or?
Did you, I understand you said you were speaking for?
Yeah, Friends of Buckingham.
You got five minutes.
Okay, so I can't continue. Okay. The state study says that the state's protections are inadequate in many very concerning ways. It actually says that even with the best of regulations, the risk cannot be completely eliminated. No current state or local requirements will be enough to protect us. The commissioners are talking about working with existing zoning code, the special use permit, but it's not clear how they would work with it to make it strong enough to protect us. We don't hear them talking about a ban. There seems to be a disconnect between the Planning Commission and what you have, and you all, and what you have tasked them to do. So, I'm wondering if you're actually following their process. That's about it. I'm just, I'm hoping that you're really watching what they're doing and seeing to it that they are taking your directive. Thank you.
Joyce Gooden, District 6. And Janelle Venable will be next.
My name is Joyce Gooden, and I live in the Georgia Creek Precinct. And Chairman Joe Chambers is my supervisor. First, a big thank you to the county and to whoever was involved in setting up the technology in this auditorium. I thank you for the monitors that allow us to see how the supervisors are voting, as well as being able to see the presentations that the different speakers bring before the board. As a citizen, I appreciate the voice to print minutes and the motions that are summarized within those minutes. Thank you to whoever hired Jamie Shoemaker, for he has been a very knowledgeable and responsive technology person. I appreciate it. One of Gordon Parks' wives once said that living with him was like living inside of a washing machine. I imagined a front loader washer that would circle one way for a period, then rest, then tumble the other way. I feel as if Buckingham's electoral process is just tumbling in this front loader with no period of rest, just erratic decisions and erratic behavior. I strongly advocate for the Electoral Board meetings to be held in this auditorium. If it must be held during the day, and there's a cost, so be it. The cost has already been high and lost public comments and documented poorly-conducted Electoral Board meetings. The video system would have captured the current listed chair of the Board declaring herself a board quorum of one. The law clearly states that there must be two Board members for a quorum. The public comments need to be recorded. For the record, as it is now, our comments just disappear into the atmosphere. Our names are there in the minutes, but not what we said. The Electoral Board written minutes since January have been biased and full of venom. If it had been videoed within this auditorium, we could compare the minutes to the video. What happened to the two emergency board meeting minutes that were posted then taken down? I guess that just didn't happen. If meetings were videoed, we would have a record. I questioned the selection of the interim registrar by an invalid quorum of one person. I questioned any emergency meeting that was not given three workdays notice. Workdays exclude weekends and holidays. I have given each of you the resume of a person who applied for the interim registrar position. Tamisha Tyree's resume is awesome. She did not receive acknowledgement that her resume had been received. Of course, Ms. Tyree got no interview. Today, I saw on the general registrar's website that there is another emergency meeting at yet another location. Is everything an emergency? Or are we truly in a state of emergency? I'm just tumbling in that front loader washing machine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janelle Venable, District 2. And Sue Miles will be next.
Good evening, Buckingham County Board of Supervisors. My name is Janelle Venable, and I live in the White Hall Precinct, which is District 2. I come to you as a college graduate with over 10 years of human services experience, community service experience, two years of electoral experience prior to being elected to the Dillwyn Town Council, in which I currently sit as a council member. I know you all are wondering, why do I list all these things about myself? I list them to let you know that I stand before you educated and knowledgeable about the hiring practices, policies, and procedures, and much more. My concern that I wish to address today is the hiring process for Buckingham County. Most recently, I applied for the position as the county general registrar. Upon completing the online application, which may I note is not fully online, it is simply a PDF document that needs to be completed. I emailed in my resume and my cover letter, and may I also note that the email address listed to send those items in was someone's personal email address. After submitting my application, I never received notification that the application was received, nor did I receive any notification letting me know that I was not considered for the job. The gross negligence in the hiring process of Buckingham County employees is deeply concerning. The process does not appear to be streamlined or outsider user-friendly. I say all that to say this. How many opportunities has the county missed to employ excellent and qualified candidates due to the poorly constructed and outdated hiring process? Thank you for your time.
Sue Miles, District 4. And Cheryl White will be next.
Good evening. My name is Sue Miles. I'm from the Mayesville District. Hello. Due to the current chaos in our county's Electoral Board system, Buckingham appears to be in a civil war. In January, the Board was basically attacked by a small group of very partisan and self-serving members of one political party. That attack has brought our electoral system to its knees, has caused an extremely competent registrar to be fired without justification, resulting in the entire staff also quitting, has allowed one member of this Board to hire by herself an interim registrar, and has caused their county to suffer public embarrassment locally, statewide, and nationally, all done by a handful of people at the expense of the entire county population. And before January, none of this could be said. Buckingham's electoral system was a well-run machine that did its job and served its citizens. In every way, the Board appeared to be nonpartisan. It was a system that was not run by behind-the-scenes party officers who make false accusations about our electoral system and who are appearing to be choreographing every move in the county that the majority members of this committee were making and are making. It was simply a system that worked. Having said that, I am respectfully asking, actually, I'm pleading with the members of this Board to use whatever legal power it has to turn this issue around for the betterment of the citizens of this county. I would like to think that something can be done now so that we can have faith that November's election will be, like in the past, well-run, nonpartisan, and efficient. There are many eyes watching Buckingham. All of you owe it to the citizens of this county to talk to the Electoral Board. Ask them to explain what is happening. Ask them to justify their actions, to determine if they're doing the right thing for the people of this county. You control the budget. They should be aware of that. And I highly recommend that if you've not already done so, that you make a point to meet and get to know the interim registrar, as that position will determine the success of future elections. Don't let a small minority of self-centered individuals take control of this county. Someone has to do something right now. It's like everyone is standing around and watching a house burn down, but not doing anything about it. And the people in that burning house are the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheryl White with NAACP.
Good evening.
Five minutes. Ms. Hicks, you're speaking for a group.
Thank you. Good evening, Supervisors. My name is Cheryl White, and I am the president of the Buckingham branch of the NAACP. The mission of the NAACP is to achieve equity, political rights, and social inclusion by advancing politics and practices that expand human and civil rights, eliminate discrimination, accelerate the well-being, education, and economic security of Black people and all persons of color. It seems like equity, political rights, social inclusion are at risk here in Buckingham County. Our local branch has had a long history of voter registration, voter education, and encouraging everyone to get out to vote. In my time, people have been arrested, beaten, and even killed for equal opportunities and for the right to vote. The Buckingham branch of the NAACP is very concerned about the turmoil within our electoral system here in this county. The Electoral Board is dysfunctional. Three of the Board members appointed since January of 2023 have resigned. Two longtime members have resigned. We, how are we, how do we plan to move forward if our leadership is dysfunctional? Buckingham County Register's office has lost its whole electoral staff. The registrar, the deputy registrar, the office workers. Who is there to run our elections? Will we be ready for a fair election in November when we will have more than 20 persons on the ballot? We have heard from poll workers who are unwilling to continue to work in the polls in the hostile environment created in November of 2022's election. They noted that the atmosphere has gotten worse since November. The register position was not widely advertised and had a very short application period. We had to search intensely to find it online. The position was not posted on the register's website, but on the county's website. Why wasn't it on the general register's website? Was the position advertised in local papers? We have heard from three qualified African-American applicants whose applications were not even acknowledged. So, of course, they did not get a call for an interview. It seemed like the new register was selected and announced before the close of the application period. This is not equity. We have made local, state, and national news with regards to what had gone wrong. This is a call for positive action. Action of equity. Action of ensuring political rights for everyone. Action for social inclusion, not social or political exclusion. I'm asking the Board of Supervisors to intervene so that Buckingham County can make the news of how to correct this destructive path that we are now on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marie Flowers, District 3. And Catherine Chinakis will be next.
Marie Flowers, District 3, and member of the Buckingham Dillwyn Garden Club for 25 years. There's two things I want to talk about. You've heard most of the things that I wanted to say about the election board. And at the last meeting, the new registrar was not even, he wasn't allowed to tell us what his qualifications are or what his history is with elections, aside from maybe he just voted. And the fact that three other applicants were not even acknowledged or interviewed. And now I want to talk about the mining. Several people have expressed to me a concern about Kionite. And I can tell you, all of us who are interested in the mining do not want to see Kionite go out of business. Actually, Mr. Matthews told me that Kionite has gotten awards for their...
Environmental safety.
Yeah. And that if they wanted to open up another mine, Mr. Matthews would be able to testify for them. But to prove it first, I mean, what I'm trying to say is...
Don't put any words in my mouth.
Kionite. Kionite has given this county an example of responsibility. If another company comes to Buckingham and says they want to mine one thing or another, will they have the kind of background that Kionite has to show us that they are responsible? And that's why I'm hoping that you would approve the, prove it first. I once asked a friend of mine who did income taxes, and I asked him about, do the workers at Kionite get a decent pay? And he says they, they do. And so, but I think the example there of prove it first, you know, somebody came and said, where is it? Show me a good company. This is the kind of thing that we want to see here. And also remember that there are not enough people in government to enforce any violations. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Catherine Chinakis, District 5. And Kay Carter will be next.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I will be there tomorrow at the emergency meeting, persevering for the very life of this country. And it makes what I'm going to present even more valuable, Right Livelihood Celebration. For this June Father's Day season, our fatherly stewards who keep up the county's refuse and recycling centers. We do not often focus on the very persons who keep up every day at Buckingham sites the tons of garbage and old stuff. This Father's Day season, end of June, we should acknowledge our everyday heroes. Since you, the administrators, have headed up this success, the tribute begins with those who manage the site functions, then acknowledge all who work at their locations. Our heartfelt recognition is of great benefit for the community at large. Please, everyone, including you who will be on the ballot in November, go to the sites and witness what our stewards are doing. They show strong fatherly strength, keeping all this in order, earning our respect. Right livelihood. In this memo, which I submitted, are recommendations to our Right Livelihood Father's Day recognition. Awareness, quite simple, which is for everyone. Obviously, mindful respect for our stewards will expand the young people's need for models. And to the Chamber of Commerce, because all these businesses rely on the county's cleanliness and order. Right livelihood is evaluated by contributions to the community's quality of life. Can I have an amen and make it happen?
Amen.
Kay Carter, District 1. And Mindy Zlatnik will be next.
Hello. My name is Kay Carter, and I live in District 1, New Caton Precinct. My comments are for the Board and all citizens of Buckingham. I am... I am concerned that anyone running for office and do not meet or do the bidding of a party chief and a small fraction of Buckingham citizens, possibly invalid accusations could be rumored about the candidate, and even make national news as we've done. As we saw earlier this year, I assume elected officials may be associated with either Republican or Democratic Party, but once elected, all should be nonpartisan. It appears one chief not only has identified candidates for the Electoral Board, but continues to direct their actions and decisions. He even, they even look at her like, what should I say or do? I did not realize a qualified candidate would or should need direction from their chief. It may not be illegal, but it certainly appears tainted. It appears candidates quickly forgot their nonpartisan oath. Hopefully Buckingham judges, elected officials, and citizens would not consider anyone of this chief's caliber to be selected, appointed, or allowed to run for any local office. Earlier this year, in a volatile meeting, a citizen stated to all, "To less be kind." Later, that person, citizen, barely tapped the chief on the shoulder, and she took a warrant out for it. And that was just, I saw it. The majority of good, respected county citizens need to be aware and speak out for better leadership in one of their parties, rather than ill-informed citizens with bits and pieces of information creating chaos and dividing the county. Our country is more divided than most of us have ever seen. Individuals may not agree, but please talk to each other. And possibly more important is to listen to the opposition. I continue to believe that Buckingham, Virginia, and our nation can work together and come together for the betterment of all, I hope and pray.
Mindy, Mindy Zlatnik, District Five, and Heidi Bear Two will be next.
A little bit here, different topic, gold mining. My name is Mindy Zlatnik, and I live in District Five. On Wednesday, April 19th, the Planning Commission was presented with an excellent summary of the state study on the impacts of gold mining in Virginia. The commissioners then talked about how they should first see what they already had in the zoning code, and how keeping the status quo of the special use permit would give them a lot to work with. This is what the local mining companies suggested in the last Planning Commission work session, which concerned me. The mining companies do not want change. Keep it the way it is, we're good. I had thought since your decision to ban metallic mining was made on the back of extensive knowledge of the harms of this type of mining and the state study about the potential impacts of gold mining, that it would be unnecessary to review that material with the Planning Commission. The work session on April 19th seemed to prove this wrong. It was noted in that discussion that a company would need a federal and state license before beginning work. It sounded like they thought that those permits would provide some safety for us, but I know from the state study that the state does not have adequate regulations in place that would provide protection. As you know, updating these regulations, these regulations is strongly recommended by the study. The existing zoning code in Buckingham County allows mining by right in M2 with no local permit required, and in A1 and M1, it is allowed with an SUP. I understand that is why your recommendation to the Planning Commission was to amend the zoning code to ban metallic mining in all zoning districts. Perhaps banning new metallic mining in all districts would be more to the liking of the mining companies? Or specifying that you're not talking about Kionite or slate? Virginia Code 15.22280 gives local municipalities permission to regulate or prohibit mining in their area. People in the county and all of you do not want metallic mining. It seems to me that the Planning Commission has been overly influenced by the two-hour testimony they heard from the local mining industries. The state study and its results were not acknowledged by the Planning Commission or the local mining companies in these discussions. And after a presentation about the state study, the Planning Commission discussed, discussion reverted to the SUP, the recommendation of the mining industry. There's popular agreement to ban metallic mining in Buckingham County. The solutions are not easy, but I don't think that just tweaking existing code is the answer. I want the stronger protections that are not based on zoning that the rights-based ordinance would provide. Please, protect us now.
Thank you.
Heidi Bear Two, District Five, and that's the last one.
Hello, my name is Heidi Divia Bear Two, and I live in District Five. And I'd like to take advantage of your new, your, your return to the old rules. I also represent the Virginia Community Rights Network. All right. I have a friend who's a history teacher in Charlottesville who support, who supports us and likes to follow what's going on with our work to stop metallic mining in Buckingham and the state. When he saw this book, it really hit him what fantastic work we've done. This book is a hard copy of the published state study on the impacts of gold mining on Virginia. The Southern Environmental Law Center gifted this to us. This is a $50 book. My friend, my friend asked if y'all appreciate what we've done, and I said, I don't think so. So he insisted that I let you know what a big deal this is. And I just want to pause to say, I said that I represent Virginia Community Rights Network as I stand here, but this work is, is a collaboration. Friends of Buckingham was definitely involved. We worked together. And then a coalition of other groups across the state, because this doesn't just impact Buckingham, of course. It impacts the entire state. We're all downstream. We're all downwind. So this is our important contribution to Buckingham and all of Virginia. There is a four-page highlights of this almost 300-page report, which you can access by going to the Friends of Buckingham Gold Mining page to find the link. I hope you look at it for yourself. It would make it more real how impactful is metallic mining on any economy, and how we must take a strong stand to stop the troubles from trespassing on our health and welfare. Overall, the state study found that the regulatory framework of Virginia appears to have been designed for operations like crushed stone quarrying and sand and gravel operations, not gold mining. The report says that Virginia's current regulatory framework is not adequate to address the potential environmental degradations that could accompany commercial gold mining. There is a radical difference in the impacts of metallic mining versus stone, sand, and gravel mining. This is really important, and I hope the Planning Commission gets this, as you have tasked them with banning metallic mining. They have mostly heard testimony from local industry, as you've heard from others, who have conveyed that metallic mining ain't so bad. Nothing, nothing that a little baking soda can't handle. This is very concerning. The Planning Commission can rewrite Buckingham zoning code to ban new metallic mining and accommodate current mining. The Southern Environmental Law Center has recently created a toolbook, toolkit, that has examples of how other counties have handled this problem, with different trade-offs and risks to weigh. Existing county zoning codes, Buckingham County zoning codes are ill-prepared for metallic mining. Not only are the state regulations far from adequate, but also there is a minimal oversight and, there is minimal oversight and enforcement. Virginia agencies are not able to levy fines for noncompliance. Just want to make sure you got that. This took my breath away when I first heard that. You and I are fined for speeding or reckless driving. Virginia miners enjoy no penalties. We all want an easy answer, but I think we're going to have to work for it. We still assert that the no trespass, the no toxic trespass, prove it first ordinance is the best. It may just be the least offensive for local mining interests. And so I thank you for looking into what is, what are the best solutions for all of us. Thank you for that. And I, I do just want to thank all of the caring people of this county for standing up and speaking up for our voting rights and for a, a fair Electoral Board. And I hope we, I hope we can all come together to find, find a better way. And there is a saying that nothing like trouble to bring us together. So maybe we can get beyond our, our partisan differences and actually come up with some really healthy solutions. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank the citizens for all your comments. I really agree that that is a serious problem in Buckingham when they elect a voter. Been here for 37 years, I've never seen nothing like this before. In times past, for the last 37 years, Republicans and Democrats worked together for the betterment of this county. And now a few people is tired apart. And I'm saying to the Democrats and the Republicans, you need to get your rotten opposite the best and build back better for Buckingham County. And I hope and pray that Buckingham County, best days yet to come, but we got to do it together. What do we have to do? Mr. Scott Frederick.
Evening Chairman and Board. Thank you for having me tonight. Wanted to share with you guys, as far as work we've been up to, we've been doing a lot of patching. The weather's finally warmed up to the point where we can do a lot of good asphalt work. We've rented a paving machine instead of putting patches down with a motor grader, so we've been using that on Route 610. Guys are getting pretty good at using it. We've also patched Back Mountain Road with a contractor. Put a lot of tons of asphalt down out there, milled it and put it in with a contractor that did it with a paver. It's a really good patch out there. We're also working on a purchase order to do more of the repair patching, like we did on Route 60 in the fall. We're going to do more of Route 60 here in the next few weeks to finish out our fiscal year. Following up on some comments that you guys gave me at our last meeting, we'd put dust control out on Nobbin Hill Road. I think that was one of Supervisor Davis's complaints. We put some calcium chloride out there to help keep the dust down. Then also, there's a ditch on 15 where there is a clogged driveway pipe. It's causing the ditch to hold water when it rains, but we checked it at the rain right after our last meeting. I would think it was the three and a half inch rain event, and the water didn't get in the road. So it's not dire, but we've pulled up the old plans. We got utilities marked, we're going to get it fixed. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. I submitted a traffic engineering work order for a speed study on Route 750 Wingo Road. I got another work order in place for Edwitts on Plank Road. I don't think they've been able to do it yet. We've had a lot of equipment go down lately, and it's kind of put us behind on some of our work orders. I got a, resubmitted the traffic engineering work order for Route 60 at Route 632 Scott's Bottom, Cyra Road. And this time, I specifically asked them to review it for transverse rumble strips leading up to the main line from the side street.
Praise goodness. Thank you.
We'll see when it comes back. I'll share the results of it with you. We have reviewed the tree that was brought up on Francisco Road, Supervisor Matthews. It's alive and healthy. It's not showing any signs that it's going to fall anytime soon. We submitted another speed study for Mohawk Road. So that's three to four month turnaround time on speed studies. When that comes back, I'll share it with the board. We've been doing some pothole patching on 24. The signal ahead signs are all up at Sprouse's Corner. I actually just checked that on my way here. And then on Route 20 at Route 649, I saw those tree limbs you were talking about Chairman, and we've gotten approval to do some mechanical pruing, which we don't, normally don't do that on our primaries, but we're going to do it there. Worked with our roadside crew. We're going to get them limbs cut way back, so that should fix that problem.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem, no problem at all. And then one of the, I think it's two meetings ago, I was here at 56 at Route 663. It's called Union Hill Road. Somebody asked us to look at this. We've got some of the tree limbs cut back, but all the stuff that's left out there is off of our right of way, so we can't really cut it. But I'm going to get it reviewed now for signage that may help alert drivers to the intersection. So we've, no problem at all, sir. Thank you. And then we've just been up to normal routine maintenance, other than that, cleaning out pipes. Worked with Lynn Hill on one that he, he brought to our attention. We got those, it was a double line, we got that cleaned out. That's all I came prepared to share with, about what we've been up to since the last meeting. If you guys have any comments or concerns to bring to my attention, I'll take them.
District One?
Yeah, I just want to thank y'all for patching some of those potholes on 610. They won't knock your teeth hurt now. They ain't perfect, but they're a lot better than they were. Thank you.
Thank you.
District Two?
Frederick, I went on Black Mountain Road the other day and sat up for about 15 minutes, and I said, you know what? I can't complain because Mr. Frederick's doing what I asked him to do. And I know the people on Black Mountain Road should be happy. It looked really good, and I was glad that I was able to introduce you to Dillon Fire Department. Sounds like VDOT's looking at that, and glad that they could show you the inconsistencies that you had with your report compared to what they had. And maybe that VDOT will see, maybe they overlooked a few incidents because Dillon said that you didn't, VDOT didn't have quite the incident report that they did. So I'm glad that you were able to meet with them and hopefully get that resolved. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
District Three?
I don't have anything.
District Four?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Is there any word on the speed reader sign for the Courthouse Village, Mr. Frederick?
Supervisor Miles, I'm glad you brought that up. Here is a permit to install speed reader signs in Buckingham Courthouse on Route 60.
Thank you for that. And so hopefully we can get on that soon and slow some people down.
I want to thank the board and Carl for working with us. This is the first time in the district that we've ever done it like this, issuing the locality a permit to install. So we're interested to see how it works, and we're kind of happy that we partnered with you on it. So thank you, guys.
And, and...
I'll say also, the equipment, those speakers haven't been ordered, so this was coming in June, so we've already ordered the equipment to be here, so they should be here soon.
Okay, good deal.
And then too, Mr. Chairman, on Twin Creek Road, there are some potholes and there's crumbling shoulders as well, Mr. Frederick. And specifically on Andersonville Road, the, the road's cracking up, and I know y'all say y'all are doing some patching, but if you could please take a look at that. Enenville is, it looks like a tank went across it, but it's, it's all cracked up and the... Anyway, as I've said before, a lot of the roads seem to be crumbling, so if we could please take a look at those two roads in my district specifically, that's the border between Supervisor Matthews and my district. So I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Happy to take a look at them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
District Five?
Yeah, the firehouse road, we don't want to gravel part of it. It wouldn't hurt to put a grate on it.
Okay.
Keep it up with a little bit. Not bad, but...
Yes, sir. We'll machine that road.
First, just if you get chance to do it.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you.
You already addressed my concerns. District Six, I appreciate it. District Seven?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scotty.
All righty. I think we have a public hearing. Should I just stay up here?
Yes, sir. You stay there, you know, man. We're going to have a public hearing for our six-year plan. At this time, open the public hearing. Anybody want to speak?
No one signed up.
Nobody signed up? Well, close it then.
Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion that we adopt the, the VDOT secondary six-year plan for fiscal year 2024 to fiscal year... uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
Twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine on the paper here.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-four, twenty-nine.
Put your glasses on. Yeah, these aren't my regular glasses. They're really not.
It been motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Allen, that we would, uh, uh, approve this six-year plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine. That's correct?
That's correct.
Any questions? All in favor? Seven yes. All right, thank you, Mr. Frederick.
Thank you, Board, you guys have a good night.
We ain't got no zoning matters, so we won't add that. Item M, Department of Agent Requests, items in consideration. Number one, the Corporate Extension Service consider appointment to the Buckingham Extension Leadership Council. Mr. Carter, who is?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, in your package tonight, you should see a familiar letter from Ruth Wallace at the Extension Office. A couple of months, I came to you guys asking, do you have, wanna nominate somebody? Anybody wanna board and be on this, uh, executive committee for the Extension Office? So see if you guys have anybody you wanna nominate or you wanna volunteer or.
Do we have a board member or the volunteer to serve on it?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Does it have to be a board member or can it be a member of the community?
I think it can be a member of the community.
It can be.
Are you gonna table it next month?
You got some, if you got some people you wanna think about nominating?
What, what, so with the Extension Service?
Yes, sir.
And what is it, in what department or is it any, just, you know, in general or who's?
It's, uh, for the, they have a Extension, Extension Leadership Council for the Extension Office. So I don't know if that's like their, uh, board above their leadership or not, but that's what they're asking. Um, I think they said they met like three times a year each quarter for, so it's not a monthly meeting. It's just about three or four times a year. The letter in your packet, it doesn't give you much on what that person be responsible for doing. If you wanna table it, I can bring you back more details.
Excuse me, Mr. Carter, Ms. Jones? Come in, come behind the mic, please.
My name is Donna McFray Jones. I'm here in response to our Extension Leadership. We want a board member. We already have members as representative of various, um, that's the intention of sending the invite to the board.
So y'all rather have a board member? Do we have a board member or the?
Just want a board member to be part of our organization, our membership.
How many times do you meet?
We meet, um.
Quarterly.
Quarterly.
Quarterly. Uh, Mr. Matthews is here.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Matthews is here, do it.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion by Mr. Miles, second by Mr. Supervisor Davis, that we appoint Mr. Matthews, Supervisor Matthews, District three, to serve on the Extension Committee. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven yes. County Attorney, no, I'm sorry, sorry, number two, uh, solid waste, uh, considered visceral. There are plans on Avonia Solid Waste Site.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, place up for your stations tonight. Uh, we bid this project, uh, project out, as Dennis has said before. You know, this is the interest to the, uh, Avonia Solid Waste Center. Uh, there's some asphalt there that keeps getting potholes in it. So we put out a bid, uh, for sponsors on a company or contractor to, uh, repair that site and asphalt it to make it nice and smooth when they come up around fifteen. Uh, in your package tonight, you should see the, we only got one bid from Pearson Construction and they had a lump sum amount of forty-one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to pave that area. I don't know how you guys wanna move forward. We only received one bid, I don't know if you wanna wait, but that number's a little higher than we were expecting. But if you do decide to do this, uh, I recommend, recommend that you take it from the end of your balance if you wanna move forward with it. I was also told Pearson could start whenever, if you guys approve it.
Well, this is asphalt, I thought we was looking at concrete and though.
Oh, I got.
This is asphalt, it's asphalt we first pull and then it turns to concrete, yeah.
I'm making a motion that we do it.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
It been motion by Supervisor Davis, uh, second by Supervisor Miles, that we would accept this bid from prison, that's correct?
Yep.
All, any questions on the motion, all in favor? Seven yes.
I thought I didn't vote right, but I did.
I got seven yeses, okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh, county attorney matters.
Mr. Chairman, the county attorney has no matters for tonight.
Okay, all right, all right, then, uh, uh, county administrators report.
Uh, other than the personnel, I gave it to you on a separate cover, I have no items as well.
All right, well, uh, other board members, you know, board members matters. Here, excuse me, here, now we need to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that the Board of Supervisors enter into executive closed session.
Hold on just a second before you do that.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'll withdraw my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I say something?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I know it's a lot of ruckus going on in the county right now and we got Republicans on this board, I'm one, we got Democrats on this board.
I'm one.
And we all get along fine and we're not, all this bickering and arguing is not between us. And I hate that a few people are destroying our county with this mess. We all just need to, the ones that got problems need to straighten up and act right and just do the right thing for the people of this county.
You got it right.
We all got elections and come in November and it's just, it's a sad state of affairs, I think, that we need to fix. And I don't know what, the board, we have no power over that election board over there. But we can, we can show, see what's going on and I think we need to see what's going on, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak as well?
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm glad to book you, uh, Dennis, Mr. Davis brought that up. Um, you know, I've been on the board the shortest amount of time and, uh, I can't tell you that I actually voted on a Republican or Democratic issue. This is all for the betterment of our community. It's not all about a Democrat or Republican issue, what's a?
All or nothing?
A table fill, table fill. It's not, it's not in about that. I've been on here, like I said, for a, a small amount of time, but I don't know one piece of information I voted on was Republican or Democrat. So I, most of the people in the community know that, from I got one in college playing baseball, but I'm gonna relate this to baseball, about eight years ago, I, I coached a state championship team that went to Alabama with my son, him. I had Democrats, I had Republicans. I'd had every race that could be donate to that team from Buckingham. And I don't say I was the first one that ever came up with this, but after we won three or four games, I remember typing on Facebook Buckingham Proud. And, uh, to be honest with you, this is not Buckingham Proud. And, um, all I can tell you in baseball in the last three or four years, there's been a thing called instant review, where they could look at the umpire's decision. And I think if the umpire looked at this decision from some of the things that have been done on the electoral board, I think he would turn and play over and say, hey, this is not the right way to go. And the only thing I can tell you is I hope at some, at some point that all of us can come back and be Buckingham Proud, whether it's Republican, Democrat issue, whatnot. I'd like to see us all get back where at the end of the game, we all Buckingham Proud, so.
That's it. Well, uh, that's it. As I said earlier on, I, I guess Ms. Thomas probably served long on the, in the matter, under my watch and, and Democrats and Republicans work together. We didn't hear, had no voter fraud, nobody, uh, if you're doing a good job, leave them in place. Why kick people out that are doing good jobs? I can't, I don't understand that, you know? And, and, and we got a mess in Buckingham County, I went to, uh, Hatton Fur over there last Saturday, that's the first thing they jumped me by, what's wrong with people in Buckingham? That's all us crazy, that's what I told them. And then walked away from me and left me alone. My granddaddy said, you're a damn fool and know it, you ain't got nothing to worry about.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, since we're on other board matters, I, I wanna speak as a citizen and not as a, um,
That's right.
county supervisor, um, as Jordan Miles's citizen. Um, I think the, um, idea would be to slow some of this, um, activity down is that a private citizen file a lawsuit about, a comprehensive suit about all what has happened from day one and as it continues. And I intend to do that. Again, as a private citizen. This week.
Any other board member had a comment before we go into executive session? Don't we thank you, we need to, we, we, do we have a second? Motion by, uh, motion by Supervisor Miles, second by Supervisor Davis, that we go into executive session. Mr. Miles, you wanna read that code for me?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That we enter, a motion to enter into executive closed session with, uh, regards to two point one dash thirty-seven eleven dot eight dot seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or legal proper, to actual or legal or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. And consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. And also two point one dash thirty-seven eleven dot eight dot three, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property, uh, for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body.
Okay. Everybody ready to vote? That damn thing had to mess up our, that thing would blink up, uh, what Jamie, Jamie? Blink on me? Yeah, close up.
Matthews ain't voting.
There's, there's a malfunction.
Yeah.
I got you.
All right, thank you. Go into executive session.
Joe, I mean, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Farida.
I do it now, what wrong, Jordan?
Okay. Okay, I didn't know.
Hit, hit, hit his, hit it, Jordan.
Is it recording?
Okay. Okay, thank you, okay, thank you, man.
Regular session and certify that to the best of each board member's knowledge only business matters related to the codes of which the executive meeting was convened, was discussed or considered in the executive closed session sir.
Motion by Supervisor Miles Sucker, Supervisor Allen, only thing we discussed when executive on the code was stated. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Seven yes. And then the action as a result of executive session. He and we have adjourned the meeting. Go home to your wives.